Yeah, I know, some of us got the shit pretty short.
I tried to tell Christine.
But we'll see.
She's gonna be at North Meskeen County tomorrow.
Oh, is it tomorrow?
At two.
What's tomorrow? Tomorrow's Tuesday.
Who's Nancy?
Um, Saks, our LBD, they're like... I think they have one break. She just met my grand... Yeah. Here's Alexis, right there at the bottom.
I call me, thank everyone for coming. First, we'll have our invocation by the Christian.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for our time together. May you be able to present, Lord, and lead us in the right direction, Lord, and guide us. And we just thank you for this township and all the leadership in Jesus' name.
If you'd join me for the first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would do the roll call for a straight.
Carrie.
Here.
Noah.
Here.
Christie.
Here.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Renee.
Here.
Tracy.
Here.
Next, if we have someone make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Make the motion.
Motion by Carrie, do you have the support?
Aye.
Support by Noah in the discussion. If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next, we have the approval of the past meeting minutes.
Make the approval of past meeting minutes.
Motion by Carrie, do you have the support?
Second.
Or by Renee, in the discussion. Carrie, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Are there any questions on the treasurer's report? Carrie, none, we'll place that on five. Next, we have paying the bills. Do we have a motion to pay the bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills, please.
Motion by Carrie, do you have the support? Support by Noah, any discussion on the board? Carrie, none, roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Christie.
Yes.
Tracy, yes? Jeffrey.
Yes.
Motion passes, next we have a party board report, if you would chief.
Thank you, sir. Last month, a little less than normal, easy words, but sixty-five requests still under the, well, under the ten-minute mark. Last month was a hundred percent of the time, we were really excited about that, three minutes, three seconds, the guys were doing a bang-up job. We're beginning to plan the open house, we're still on track for October twelfth, from six to eight, in the firehouse, obviously. It was awesome as usual. Now, I know we had suspended, now, obviously, due to the pandemic, so we were really excited about getting back into the swing of it. My staff is quite excited, we had a group of things different, some things have changed how we have did, just through the supplies, so, but we're still a lot of other places, we're pretty excited. Obviously, we all took it, saw it, arrived.
Yay.
Pretty excited. I went down the fourth of September, I did the final inspection, I had a couple of things we had to do, we had a couple of changes. Didn't, didn't come in as we had thought, we didn't know that that wasn't a change, obviously, last year, the budget, we were only over by about five thousand, which I make a grand scheme of things, it's pretty darn close. It's, it's amazing, the guys spent the majority of yesterday, we were gonna do a couple of things, but we decided that we wanted to get her ready to go, she needs to serve, so, but the guys spent their entire Sunday busting their behinds, and it looks amazing, so, obviously, it's on the agenda, but, Scott, once we finish this, this part of the meeting, we'll keep me and you going next door and do a ceremony, let you add back your thing, but I think it's, it's gonna serve us right, right in the gift, so, I thank you, that person for what you've done, that's been a long time, it's worth it now, so, to see it to be fruition, it's kinda cool to walk into the manufacturer and see it, really fun to get a picture of your justice, so I saw, and I mean, screw up. It went well, okay, I had a couple of problems, but, but again, we're pretty excited, so again, please, if those of you want to join us next door, we'd love to have you, so, it's all happy.
Yeah, and so we can hit it, that's why I put it right in, in the meeting itself. So, next, we have the planning commissioner's report, if you would leave.
August, there it is. I just had one unfinished business, the solar array from the previous month, there was no one in attendance before, so we just needed, and we needed one other piece of documentation. Then, other than that, the Village of Lakewood Club planning commission was in attendance, and they just had questions about our master plan, because they were looking at their master plan, and just had some concerns, and, and just were some concerns and things to look at, when we look at our master plan next year.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, we have our zone board of appeals report, if you would, Noah.
The whole board was present. Minutes for June seventh were approved. This concerned William Ripley, four Gerald Andrews Senior at thirty-two eighty-seven, he asked for a variance, I think it was in two thousand and six, when Dalton Township made the zone over there, he had to have minimum five acres to build a parcel on, and this man purchased fourteen acres forty-five years ago with the intent of dividing the land for his lineage, his children's children's children, which I applaud him for that, so, we brought it down to two and a, two and a half acres for this man to be able to purchase and build. He's gotta jump through other hoops, but, the man purchased that forty-five years ago, and I just, yeah, I definitely motion for that to go through, for now. A man, Andy Holmes, was there, and he was concerned that his property might be invaded on with his privacy, but, his home was literally in the middle of his property with woods all around, so, everything's good, there was no old business, and it passed, and it's true.
Thank you. Next, we have two presentations, and then we'll go do the fire truck push-in, and the first one is Morgan with Greater Meskeen Economic Development. If you would, come up, and I, I turn that a little bit, because I want the audience to be able to see and hear and board as well, so, I think everyone will be interested.
All right, sounds good. All right, um, got five minutes, so keep my eye on it, otherwise you can just shut me off. Um, so, thank you for flattering me this evening, so I'm Morgan Carroll with Greater Meskeen Economic Development, and I'm our director of business development, and head up all of our expansion, attraction, and retention efforts for all of our businesses in Meskeen County, and I also work on our infrastructure projects, so broadband, wastewater, all that fun stuff. Um, so, what I'm here to speak about today is broadband in Meskeen County, we all know that is an issue. During COVID, I'm gonna kinda take you guys back for thirty seconds, and then bring you to where we are now. Uh, during COVID, Windsor, West Michigan, Shoreland Regional Development Commission, they started to put together a group of individuals, um, that would be stakeholders, and a broadband study for Meskeen County, really to look at what our need is for the county. We met on and off, and then decided, okay, well, now we need a lead, so, Greater Meskeen took on, Greater Meskeen Economic Development took on that lead, and we've been leading it ever since. Um, so what we're looking at is, we looked at putting together a study from quite a few individuals to bring broadband efforts into the county. We had three proposals that were submitted back in twenty-twenty-one, I have to think now, um, and we reviewed, the studies our executive committee did, which consists of Windsor, Meskeen County, the Chamber, Greater Meskeen Economic Development, Fruitland Township, Cedar Creek Township was on a couple of the calls, so, we had a wide variety of individuals that were on this executive committee. We looked at the proposals and decided, no, none of these individuals, none of these consultants were able to do what we wanted them to do. Because, raise your hand if you would ever fill out a study, or, or, sorry, not a study, but a survey.
You would put it on the floor.
Oh, this is like the worst one yet. Yeah, all the, everybody else is like, one or two people raised their hands that they would fill out a survey. Um, so, part of those studies were people filling out surveys, but, so, if you were to fill out a survey about broadband, how many of you know exactly what type of service you have, who your provider is, all that extensive information that they would need?
Who our provider is? Sure.
Type of service?
Yeah.
Um, you know, you know if it's pole wax, you know if it's fiber, you know if it's cable.
Yeah.
Dial-up work.
Okay, all right.
You're not dealing with dummies.
Come on, Kim, you should've warned me.
I gave you the screws by control.
Come on. So, anyways, with everybody else, nobody wanted to fill out the surveys, and nobody knew what type of broadband service that they had, and part of the surveys were going to be mailed, and then some of them were going to be electronic, right? So, if you don't have service, internet service, you're not gonna get the electronic surveys. So, we took a break, decided, okay, well, let's see if we can get individual providers to provide us with their data, so then we can do it ourselves and figure out where all the gaps are. Were able to do that, funding provider, they're called BCS Technologies, they're here in the state of Michigan, and they're actually, we're working with them right now to fundraise for a parcel-by-parcel study in the county, so they will literally have boots on the ground, three or four cars driving throughout the county for about four months, they'll drive past every parcel and tell us what type of service there is, if they're a service, how far away service is, what the megavits are, uploads, downloads, everything, and then they'll compile that into a report for us, and we need this report to then get state funding and federal funding. Um, so, right now, there's a lot of funding that's coming in through, without this study, we can't go after funding, because we don't know where in our county the needs are. A lot of the broadband thresholds have changed for who can get the funding and who cannot get the funding, this study will give us exactly what we need in order to apply for those state and federal funds. So, I'm here today because I've been working with a lot of communities around the, around Meskeen County, again, to fundraise for the study, and ask for five thousand dollars for the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar study, it'll take about six months to complete the study, and then we'll be able to take that and then have basically a return on investment for the community, and then work with our providers, and state and federal officials for funding for extension of broadband.
Yeah, so that service would be for who?
Service.
Oh, you're talking about a broadband service.
It's an attempt to fill in the gaps, where there isn't a service.
So, it wouldn't be a one, one shoe fits all, people that currently have their established service, stay with that service?
Um, not necessarily, so, if you don't have a hundred download speed and twenty-twenty upload, you're considered not served.
Why is that necessary?
Um, that's necessary for whatever types of internet connection you're utilizing for, so, um, it's, that, so with the, those thresholds, that's what you're going to need to receive funding, so that's what they're gonna consider served and not served, it used to be twenty by three, now it's a hundred and twenty. Um, and that just is the speed at which you can download and upload things onto the internet, and it really is, how many devices are you using in your home, are you using Netflix, and then is somebody also then in your house, a child that is usually, usually using virtual learning, you have somebody that is using it for telehealth purposes, so, it, that's what the service varies for, but, what we're really approaching this is as a talent retention and attraction approach, because we look at broadband, just like we look at water, sewer, roads, those are essential utilities to bring people in and to continue development of Meskeen County. I can tell you right now that if you don't have broadband in your community, and you don't have access to that, that's really gonna inhibit your growth to attract talent into your community, and that, again, then inhibits our businesses for them to grow, and as everybody in this room here probably knows, every business can't find employees, so if you can't find employees, and we don't have broadband, and we don't have any place to put them, then they're probably too busy to grow.
How is this connected to a global agenda?
To a...
Global agenda?
So, I'm not gonna, we're not looking at it globally, we're looking at it as Meskeen County, how do we best serve, that's, that is what GMS purpose is, how do we best serve Meskeen County, how do we best serve our businesses, our municipalities, our residents, and having this study is exactly that, how do we best serve and continue the growth of this community?
On your own page, it says home to global companies and thriving entrepreneurs.
Correct.
What does that have to do with what we're doing here?
Because then companies that have a global presence would be more attracted to Meskeen County, to maybe grant facilities, or...
So, we, yeah, we just had a new announcement that just came out three weeks ago, a company called Siteva, um, they located in the old Thayer or BASF facility, they purchased that facility and are making four hundred and thirty million dollars worth of capital investment, and are creating over two hundred jobs, average wages of ninety thousand dollars, they're from Sweden.
Global.
So, very global.
Tech jobs.
Just their...
So, what you're saying, then, this does have to do with global agenda?
It has to do with expanding and growing Meskeen.
Yeah, I mean, those are, right, I mean, those are individual company decisions, how they're connected on a larger basis through other organizations may be debatable, but I have, I have that one, the one letter in this packet, and then I have significantly more information, the rest of the information that you sent me in the reference packet, if people want to review that one.
Yeah, so, again, asking for five thousand dollars, so we are going to...
Say it off the short end.
Are you, are you hitting up all sixteen townships in Meskeen County for this?
I'm trying to talk to everybody's municipality.
Okay, so what happens if, like, it's, if you divided by a hundred and thirty-two thousand into sixteen townships, that averages to eight thousand two hundred and fifty a township, so, and you're only asking for five thousand, so where does the extra funding come from? And...
Cities.
So, we're asking, so, how this is going is, not every community is willing to give, and we know that. Um, cities, we ask for more funding, the county, we ask for more funding, and then we're asking townships for five. Um, Meskeen County township, they gave ten.
Okay.
So, you're being paid five, like, you're being paid five. Um, so, it just depends on municipality, it's completely up to municipality itself, whether you decide to give five, ten, if you wanna pay for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, I mean, that just makes my job a heck of a lot easier, but, um, so, but we will continue to reach out to all of these families for funding.
I do have a, hopefully, a quick question, are the current providers in the county helping give you information? Are they helping support the project and give it, because, because, you know, they know how many people, how many customers, and I do see Xfinity in here, but, they, you know, just, like, customer base and how, you know, oh my...
Yeah, so we know which communities they serve, um, and we know whereabouts in those communities that they serve, but we can't pinpoint an address and say that this, this address is served by a next company, um, that's what this will do in essence.
You said that should be applying for funding beyond this point in time?
It will be utilized for applying for grant funding through the federal and state government to expand broadband services throughout Meskeen County.
So, if we were to give anything, that's what we're giving towards, is for the survey, or...
Correct.
The survey.
Ultimately, yes.
Perfect, all right, and, yeah, there's a lot of information in, in the paperwork.
Yeah, do you guys have any questions?
All of them.
Just...
We'll do it.
I'll see you on the wastewater, Thursday. So, you can ask me then.
Thank you.
And next, we have Virginia from the White Lake Community Library to give us an update as well.
I have a track and bookmarks there. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight, my name is Virginia DeMongram, I'm the director of the White Lake Community Library, and I just want to give you a quick report, we had our annual audit done, it is a clean audit, you will not find those words anywhere in the many, many pages of the reports, but the auditor told us it is a clean audit, everything is fine. We had, our revenue was higher than our expenses, so we ended the year in black, twenty-twenty-one, looking to do so again in twenty-two with, with a little bit to put aside, because it looks like we're gonna need a new roof sooner rather than later. Let's see, what else did I want to tell you? Oh, I wanted to let you know that we were part of those conversations at the beginning, when Roserick was first hosting those meetings on broadband, and the library is very dedicated to helping with those issues, but all we've been able to offer so far are really Band-Aid approaches, we can just do hotspots and tablets and ways for people to get connected at home, but we can't get everybody going down, so, we are interested in participating and coordinating and partnering the way we can. Some highlights from twenty-twenty-one, we got eighty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars in grants that we were awarded in twenty-twenty-one, we are super excited about our book bike, it has been very fun to take it, I will take it anywhere on the bike trail, so, I can get into Dalton Township and, and a couple of places, but I will not take it on the road, it's a little too big and a little too hard to steer for that, so, and really heavy on a slow vehicle. For Dalton Township, by the way, you have, we, we serve two thousand three hundred and thirty-three of your residents, we don't serve the entire township, because it's divided by school district boundaries, so we serve two thousand three hundred and thirty-three, and two hundred and eighty-four township residents currently have cards, we would really like to increase that number in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we are working on that. We are also super excited about our seed library, which we now have, now, already have, we had ours, we had ours now, um, and we have just started something called the One, Two, Three Play With Me, that's a new addition, we are becoming a family place certified library dedicated to early literacy efforts for the youngest kids in our community. And that's all I have for you, so don't get hurried or over in there.
Perfect, thank you very much, Virginia. Yes, and we will move on to our new fire truck ceremony and push-in, and so, we will reconvene here at six forty-five, and the videos will stay on, so if you decide to stay in here and talk, you know that it'll, whether it's recorded and posted, all right? And if you would, if you'd just over chief, I'd like to see the new fire truck.
That's what this book's all about, spending all this money, but it's, but it can't run on.
Okay.
They don't understand why they gotta do a study on that.
We need.
So, I got, know what I'm gonna do on Wednesday?
I, I know that, but what I'm saying is...
I'll see you on Wednesday.
Okay. I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
I'll do what I can.
Oh, feel old.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's not yet.
You might want to get calibrated. Cracked. Well, so you.
Yeah. What do you think of? Must be cracked.
That could be. Not touching.
I said, I wondered if they were coming back.
Food next door. I don't know what to do. A plane.
She's functioning.
Yeah, I, I feel like a car. Such a good idea.
What's her name? Last name?
He was with Linda all weekend.
Oh, well. You guys what?
I'm not the end.
With your wife. Yeah.
How was your reunion?
Very. But that was, my people, um, haven't been there fifteen years. They all.
It's fifty-one year of class. Only one year. So it was fun, huh?
A lot of fun.
How many, how many came?
We had a hundred.
Good job.
Out of sixty-five.
Six. What, you had a big class? Where'd you go to school?
Women.
See, my class was four hundred and some. My sisters was six hundred and some.
I had twenty-seven in my graduating class.
I had sixty-eight.
I really did. But. Fifty-one, oh, six and seven.
You go to one, 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 you went to one.
He's third grade. They needed stability.
I had about three hundred and eighty-five when I was.
I know, and Orchard View is not that big anymore.
That was the biggest class they've ever had, Jim.
None of them, because we didn't have all those high schools. But Muskegon was so big.
But see.
We didn't have Orchard View or Hope for Action.
Well, I, I was in the past, it was three hundred and eighty-five. Oh, you, and you.
Yeah.
We pushed in a fire truck next door.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yes.
What did it look like?
It looked like a.
What was the name of it?
I would have took the.
The name of, to the name of that truck. The duty of pride tradition.
The roll house.
All across the front.
Across the front. I didn't say fire truck.
It's in roll house.
Do you think they were serving them slurring about?
Well, they get some of those, uh, that's, no, the, the nickname for our department. But they do get some of those long, like, horse tires where they're out there for a long time, something like that. And they have a thing set up so that they can get into shade and everything. And I think the grills, some ribs. Some of those still lock it up. And you get one of those fires that's just burning woods, you can lift the stuff right there. You don't even need to break fuel.
Yeah, I live right down the, I live right down the road from where they main fire trucks are.
Okay.
Wyoming.
Okay.
They be kicking them off, but somebody said, I'm thinking of business when they're kicking them off, but the, a lot of the trucks are green.
I don't know how big a.
Green. Yeah, it's green coming out.
I haven't seen it.
Black. It's probably black. Some black cars. People are like, well, it might be red, red is not even a.
No.
The flames.
These green ones, you can really see them.
Are they just say green, green looking? Airport sketch. What do you have for dinner? I'll come over and go.
I had leftovers. Why do I use that? I like that. My husband, he's just got all the.
Lots of.
I don't know.
He's been breaking me over here.
I asked him, so. She was able to prescribe if they can, she, she knew that medication around and everything. This thing, we will do. I took that card here and I said, it's a good thing that I'm an eighty-two year old.
We will reconvene. And first thing on the list is public comments, which I had someone message me. I don't know if I'm setting myself up for a bad habit, allowing people to message me for public comments that I read, but nevertheless, um, I will read through the public comments. My name is Michelle Mixa, and I'm a citizen and precinct delegate of Dalton Township. I'm writing today to give my full support to moving forward to build the dog park here in Dalton Township. Our area is in desperate need of such a place for the community to meet, get fresh air, interact, and chat with their neighbors. Although I do love a dog park for exercising my dog, the reality is that it would serve the citizens just as much, if not more than their animals. I recently moved here from Ohio where we brought our dog to the local township dog park nearly every day. The park was, in many ways, a hub of activity in our area. We had a gentleman's club, which was a group of retired men who met every day at three P M. with their dogs to chat and socialize. We also had a regular who would come with his guitar and serenade to all who were there, along with their husky, Sonya, who was just as good of a vocalist. We had a local vet who brought his two dogs and was always giving out good advice to other owners on training and health. This is just a small sampling of the people who benefited from and also contributed to society in the park. As a transplant to the area, we met some of our best friends there. It truly was a great equalizer where people of every walk of life would go and build community with their neighbors. I strongly, I believe strongly that Dalton Township would be enriched by such a space. Our citizenry will only benefit from adding such park and it will serve to attract more people to our area. I am in full support of the park being built, as well as a well and picnic tables, dog waste disposal stations, and double gated entry areas for human and canine safety being installed. Beagle Park is a wonderful location for a dog park as it is a mix of sun and shade, which will be needed. I would like to thank the board for their support of this essential project that will be an immense benefit to our community here in Dalton. As I've been to many, many dog parks in multiple states, I'm happy to volunteer to help design and execute this project for, for our township. Michelle Mixa. All right. And, uh, no, this is different. And if anyone would like to make another public comment, feel free to come up to the lecture, uh, give us your name. And if you could, uh, bring us on anything on the agenda.
Uh, just, just one, Scott Christmas, uh, five zero six nine Stipple Road. I had the fortunate and unfortunate opportunity to, um, meet our chief again about this week, six weeks ago, when my daughter unfortunately stepped off my horse kind of hard and shattered her leg. I just wanted to, uh, just, you know, tonight's a great night, right, to commission that, that unit out there. I just want to express my thank you to you, sir, the department, the support that they gave me during that time. This guy charmed my two grandkids, uh, when he was there too, and I just really, um, embodied what, uh, the chief should be. So thank you, sir. I really truly appreciate that.
Thank you.
I didn't know whether you either.
Yeah, I know. I'd like to tag on your comment, though. We have a son of my support, and these guys have been, uh, out of the water, man. In, uh, servicing our home and making sure that the boy is still living, so. And we have a little angel over there, you know, every time I see her. It's like, sir. She's a great deal. Well, just a one item, I'd like to tag on, uh, uh, GMed presentation. I had one more concern. And maybe I misunderstood the whole concept, but if they're coming into the county, uh, are they going to be a loan provider at that point? No. So this, the D C S is, they do the survey. They're a company that does that type of thing, not a provider. So the other providers that we have, uh, such as Comcast and Charter and these types of things. Right. They would be using that study to apply for various grants for funding to get these places to expand, where otherwise wouldn't make financial sense to fill in the gaps of rural area. Well, that's where we'll still have the same amount of providers. It's just that the service will be. Correct. Correct. That's the idea. Yes. And you, because there are franchise agreements in townships. But by state constitution, it cannot be exclusive to an area, so you can't exclude a provider. Well, that's right. Yes, I looked at that. Perfect. Any other public comments? All right, so we'll move on to our decision items. The first one being the millage rates. And there are three of them. We have the operating millage for the township. We have the fire operating millage, and we have the fire equipment millage. Any questions or any motions?
Yeah, I guess I was talking to Tracy, Tracy a minute ago. Just, I just wanted to clarify, just go over again, just to everybody.
Yeah, I can, okay, so this is, this is a standard, yes.
So the, it's kind of, um, a, a little bit of a crazy spreadsheet, but basically we, we have to, we, we have on here what our original was, um, what the headly rollback was, um, that, that made the twenty twenty-one rates. We start with the twenty twenty-one rates, take the new rollbacks. So basically for, um, the county, for Dalton Township, we get ninety-eight percent of what we could, um, charge last year. So our millage has, has gone down a couple of percents. And that's, that has to do with the rollbacks and about the housing values, the housing market plays into that. But, um, it's a, it, it's not impacted as drastically as the housing market has been. It's not like a big up and a big down. It's sort of a, a average kind of thing. But, um, yeah, we have to submit it to the county clerk's office and the equalization department. And it's, it authorization to, um, charge property taxes on November, or December.
And that headly rollback is, is kind of odd and confusing, but in a very general sense, uh, the millage rates go down every year. Yeah, essentially, because the idea is that you're passing a certain amount, which is set up as a percentage. It has the property values across the community increase, then it stays down. So it, the percentage changes, uh, so that the amount stays the same, which doesn't quite make sense in my opinion. But nevertheless, that is how it legally works by state pension from nineteen seventy-eight.
I make motion to approve twenty twenty-two tax rate request for Dalton Township.
Motion by Noah. Support by Carrie. Any other discussion among the board? Roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Lee?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Christie?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have pass your tax bill. And this, uh, Christie was able to find a couple of tax bills that were missed in twenty twenty-one. She's been able to clear those out, but there's one left outstanding. And I included the, the letter that she'd sent, uh, with the date and everything. And this is essentially a, a double check so that she will charge that bill, um, without penalties and fees. That was missed last year, last year, along with this year's taxes.
So it was an assessment.
Let me clarify. This is a sewer assessment that did not get placed on the twenty-one tax bill. So this resident never got their installment for their sewer. So, so this now will allow me to put twenty-twos and twenty-ones on it. And I did give that person opportunity. I found the mistake in May. I gave him until the end of August to pay it without interest. He did not come in, so therefore we need to put it on this bill.
Can I ask, is there a reason why one person has the, let me have to get permission from the whole board? Or one person cover myself?
It is. It's not a tax, it's an assessment. And it was our, and it was our clerical error.
It was the township clerk error.
So that's why you have to have the whole board.
I don't think we would.
It's like during September.
Well, man, we didn't include any on there and stuff, so I had to hopefully help with that. Um, but yeah, I, I don't think we necessarily have to, but it is kind of unusual for a township to, to miss a bill like that.
I would make a motion to approve billing twenty-five seventy-four East River Road for the outstanding twenty twenty-one, uh, sewer assessment of four sixty-two, sixty-three.
Support.
Motion by Tracy, support by Noah. Any other discussion among the board? There are none, roll call vote.
Tracy, yes. Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen for ARPA fund expenditures. There are three things out here. The first one that we can talk about, uh, is the fire equipment. And just in case anyone has any questions, the fire chief is still here before he goes back over to, uh, the fire house. The basic idea, and chief can correct me on any of this, is that we have new equipment that we want toward the swamp. Now, that was approaching fifty thousand dollars originally, closer to forty, but things are increasing. Of course, it's approaching fifty. I've included sixty in here because we applied for a grant, but the grant hasn't come through. If the grant doesn't come through, we still want to give the equipment, uh, in that this will cover it. If the grant does come through, then sixty thousand dollars can be used for further equipment, uh, for some of the facilities repair and maintenance on the building over there. So that's the idea, um, with the fire funds. If anyone has any questions, uh, the chief is still here. On that portion, we'll cover the other two portions after.
That's the new truck.
Yes. We have a bunch of equipment in it right now.
Yeah, I just, I just wondered. Did the navy trucks come?
Yeah, this was the, the swamp.
Okay.
Is the building in a lot of district you're over there?
It's twenty-six years old. It's starting to get some, get some, uh, get a rough, uh, get it before it be done. Um, they're starting to, they're wearing, they're getting pretty slippery. I don't know, it's falling. The ceiling's got some issues, uh, twenty-five years old. There's a lot to make before we back here. There's a lot, a lot of work to get to, we need to, but we're still continuing with homeless, continuing with this.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Excellent. Uh, well, you can, you can have it over there if you would like, chief. And we'll cover the other two things. Yeah, in this, uh, fair enough, in this, our resolution, uh, I think we'll do the, the bike trail first. So the bike trail portion, we have, that was funded by Meyer, um, right? And when it, not the full funding didn't come through because Fred Meyer had died. They went back to the Meyer family after they cut funding, they got some more. It slowly rolls out of this fund and makes it available. Now, my idea was to conserve, because I said on that board, the very junction board, uh, to conserve that money so that A can be redone further in the future. Um, but I was told by people in, in the road commission and other people about the upkeep of that type of surface, that to make it last as long as possible, it'd be better to seal code it now, um, to make it last. The problem is available on that fund is about forty grand. Uh, the first, starting of getting the quotes, um, to do the portion from North Meskeenan up through Fruitland, uh, is about a hundred thousand dollars. So there's sixty thousand dollar gap. Now, in the calculations you see in there, I pro rated it out by the distance that everyone has. Uh, Dalton's ends up being the largest portion, uh, for just over twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's, that's why I've included it in here at twenty-six thousand dollars for coding of that trail.
Are the other jurisdictions going to contribute their portion?
That's the plan. Now, obviously, we're dealing with multiple municipalities. Um, for instance, you know, Michalinda, that, that portion that was going to be paved, the other portion was supposed to be paved. I was working with Mark Sikowski on it and it didn't happen. It didn't go through his board. Uh, so there's not necessarily a perfect way to coordinate that. But in the discussions, uh, yeah, so Lake Ten, it doesn't matter because it doesn't go through Lake Ten. That was a big political thing, um, at, at the time of why they sit on that board. Uh, North Meskeenan is a tiny portion, uh, and they're, they're very comfortable with it, their city manager is. So Meskeenan Charter and Fruitland end up being the other large, uh, contributors that would need to contribute. Um, they both certainly seem interested and, uh, would like to go forward with it. Um, of course, they have to bring it to, or they should, um, bring it to the boards like I'm doing. And how those go, you know, it's a bit of a fool's errand, uh, predicting board votes and elections. So I'm not certain.
So what happens if we do our portion, but nobody else does theirs?
Well, we wouldn't have to spend, we wouldn't have to spend money. We could do the portion through Dalton Township. Most likely at that point, though, I, I'm guessing the project would just be postponed overall. And so we just wouldn't spend money.
And it is, it is a nice big trail. I've been out several times to go on it, right all around downtown Meskeenan, on that lake trail. And there it lumps in the trail, you know, so it's, it would be wise to take care of it.
Well, in those, yeah, for the parts, I mean, we had one, uh, early this year, last year, last year, I believe, uh, I named it the Berry Bump. But there was a bump that had been painted yellow. And a woman had run into it with her bike and she'd fallen over and became a big deal at the time. And to get that cutout replaced, I mean, that was, that was a thousand dollars. Now, I can township cover that so that it would get done instead of, you know, going through all, all of these boards and getting delayed for a very long period of time. Um, as those other cracks are developing, those I do believe are going to end up being the township, um, responsibility. And so this coding would allow us to get access to that forty thousand dollar maintenance fund. Um, and hopefully extend the life of the rail for as long as possible. Um, but as further cracks develop, we're, we're still, you know, we're still responsible for that.
Right. I just want to get into a situation where we approve ours and then the, the joint fund doesn't get used for that and we have to take it more.
I, I wouldn't suggest doing that. I, I would say we approve our portion and I'm hoping it comes to how it less. Right. And then, you know, the other people are like, well, we're not going to approve our portion. Well, that probably kills the project.
I guess what happened, so after that, what happens? We get a flag, I mean, the funding, the ARPA.
We have.
We have the ARPA funds. So we have received our eight hundred and forty-six thousand.
This is at the earmark eighty-four twenty twenty-three.
In, in twenty twenty-four, as we spent in my twenty twenty-four.
So then just kind of, if that didn't go through, then that would just kind of.
It would still be available. It just doesn't leave our account.
Earmark.
Correct. Yeah, it's proved for spending, but.
Right.
But the project. Let's say it doesn't go through, could we take that way?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, the resolutions, the way I write them up was my idea. Um, a lot of other boards are not, so do we need resolutions like these for the ARPA fund expenditures? Um, maybe no one. I, I ran the idea by our Arger and he thought it'd be a good idea because the various meetings that I was in over ARPA, it seemed like there was a lot of confusion, there were a lot of changes. It's obviously a political move at the high level. And I think some people are going to be, um, snagged on some stuff at some point. And I don't want Dalton Township to be. So I want to clearly laid out, um, why we're spending it, that we're not spending it on things. You'll see in every resolution, I've included what we're not spending on because we can't, because, um, I didn't read all four hundred pages of the final ruling. Um, but I did find the section that said what we can't spend it on. And I've included that in every resolution. So we're very explicit that this is why we're spending on this, this is what we're spending on, we're not spending on these things. All right, fine, that one. Uh, the third one is the roof. Now, I included this, I, which I just recently got a couple more quotes, you know, enough to, to the point where we want to, um, potentially start moving on it. They came in, in a bit slow. Um, we just had another one, Christie reached out and was able to get another one today. Now, the three that I included in the packet, um, were flat roofs. And the one was a little over sixty, there were some a little under sixty, um, the one was a little under fifty, uh, which was nice. The one that we have today that was, uh, is set in where all proceeds are, that one is for a slanted roof. Um, so which, I mean, slanted roofs, they last better. Um, but, right, it's approaching ninety thousand dollars. And no matter which way we go in this, because you'll see a little, no, I have it pro rated out there, um, we're still going to have the expenses for the air conditioning units. Uh, so, and obviously we visited that before, that they're in very bad shape. So maybe next year, Steve, we'll have air conditioning.
How much is those, are you basing it on?
Uh, we could actually, when I talked to Two-Nai, he said that you could give one single larger one to cover the entire building. Uh, offhand, he's predicting forty to fifty grand.
So, so what, what's the newest one that's working?
On, on the roof, so, yeah, the one on that far end is broken, but we don't have the date on it. Um, the newest one we have on the roof is all the way on this side, that's from nineteen ninety-four.
Okay. So I guess what my thought is, like this ARPA money is once in a lifetime. These, we've used and abused all these AC units. This flat roof has always been a problem. Um, I think we need to peak the roof, get the, the AC units off there and just set it up for a, a better longevity.
What I heard was eighty-seven thousand plus fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, probably. Right there somewhere.
Okay. Sorry. I'm a little slow. Thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah, it's a decent amount.
I mean, I, I think we should, you know, if we don't have more quotes for the peak roof, we, we need to look at.
The other companies that I.
Was.
The other ones, because I inquired, um, with a handful, maybe half a dozen, uh, companies, and I asked them about peak roofs too. A couple of them didn't want to quote a peak roof, uh, or slanted roof for this. Um, otherwise, otherwise we would have more. So, which I, it's not a huge building, so I don't think it'd be too big a deal, but apparently it's, it's large enough that it, uh, offers a little logistical.
When I talked, when I talked to Mr. Hoffer on that peak roof today, he had stated that the trusses that he got the bid for are, uh, if we, they're too big to even come down the road. So they're going to have to come in sections. And so that's part of, that's the logistics of this quote too. It's going to take multiple trips just to get the trusses here to put them on, because that's the width of the building.
Because of the sections, they get a piece of, they get, they get less. Yeah, so, I mean, where I'm at in the roof, if something needs to be done with it, um, you know, I mean, it's, it's always a, a trade off on the money of how extensive we want to go on these types of things. Uh, I think we could even, you know, approve the roof stuff now. We could look at the air conditioning, uh, getting up and going in the spring. That could even be out of capital expenditures.
What's the furnace like here?
The heating seems to work. I am not, I'm not sure.
Because, you know, it's like, I've got many split systems in my home and it does, it does amazing. Not only heat, but cool. And it doesn't go on the roof, instead it goes upon the side wall and they work wonderfully. They really do. So that, that should be something that you guys should be considering. So these massive amounts for air conditioning units, because you, it's like you, it's like top, top dollar value. It's, I almost feel like people are taking advantage because we're a township hall. Yeah, and I just, I don't like that.
Well, that was just, I mean.
Even ARPA, somebody's going to be paying ARPA.
That was just off the cuff. That was just off the cuff that, that I was just saying for, for the size of the building. Uh, I mean, I find without air conditioning, I lived in Texas.
So right now, this quote, though, doesn't consist the cost of air conditioning? That's just to get the peak roof?
Correct.
That's, that's all it is?
Right.
With the existing air conditioners that we currently have?
We're just moving them.
We're just moving them.
Yes.
That's what the quote is. That's not getting anything newer.
And I think, so that, that's, that's a decent amount. I, I think we could probably have the air conditioning units discussion separately. And then this one could just be about, about the issue. Right, this would just be.
It's covered to disconnect. Sorry. I wouldn't have it. There's just a lot in this motion. It's, I feel like, like even if there were two things out of three that I wanted to say yes to, I, I, I'm feeling cornered.
Well, we can adjust it.
We can, that, we can eliminate.
We can verbally adjust it. We can eliminate the roof, we can change the roof amount. Um, I think, is everyone good on the?
With the first.
So fire equipment, the bike.
First two.
Go with the first two.
Okay.
Yep, first two.
Yes, you can start with.
I'm Isham first two.
You're what?
I'm Isham first two.
You're, you're the first two? All right, well, I'm looking for a motion on, um, Alver. So I think some version of it is going to get approved. Uh, Alver, someone would like to adapt it verbally.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, the ARPA fund expenditures concerning the fire, the equipment and concerning.
Bike trail.
Bike trail. Yeah, those two.
All right, so we have a motion and this is to approve the resolution, uh, only for the fire equipment and the bike trail maintenance.
Second.
Second by Renee. Any other discussion among the board? There are none, roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the land request on East River Road. Yes, yeah. Thank you, Alan, for staying around, getting your air questions.
Thanks, chief.
All right, and this, so it doesn't have an address, I included the parcel numbers in here so that people will be able to see them and include the map. And this is the first of three, you know, we're doing three now. And so in this one, we are determining how we are setting the minimum bid, which will be set in the next meeting and then in the third meeting, we'll actually open bids to sell. So all we're determining right now is that we do wanna sell it and how we're gonna determine the minimum bid, whether assessors true cash value, realtor comparables, we're gonna do an appraiser, whichever method.
Can I make a motion to use realtor comparables for their reasons of minimum bid also for reference of their parcels?
All right, so we have a motion to use realtor comparables to look at the minimums. Nice suggestion, so I'll bring those for next meeting if this does go through. So motion by Carrie, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Renee. Any other discussion among the board? Sounded like this guy?
No, okay, no.
Okay. Perfect, well, do a roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Tracy, yes. Lee?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a land request between Putnam and Catawba by Dusey Lake. So same thing, except for this one, and it's two, two parcels, two different parcels.
Same, I make a motion to use realtor comparables to consider setting a minimum bid for reference parcels. Six, one, zero, seven, seven, oh, two, zero, zero, five, zero, one, two, dash, zero, zero, and zero, zero, one, dash, zero, zero. I wasn't gonna read the whole thing again.
Motion by Carrie is saying...
I said whatever he said.
Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Nola?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Constitution Week proclamation and this Commissioner Pago, in working with the Daughters of the American Revolution, had reached out to me about Constitution Week coming up and it's, it's fairly normal for the head of the municipality to cite, I thought it'd be a nice thing to bring to the board as well, I figured it would get a decent amount of support here. And so I adjusted the recommended resolution to read Dalton Township Board of Trustees proclaiming the week instead of just a single individual, I left mine at the bottom. And then I included just for reference similar ones from Whitburn, the governor, at the state level from this year and Biden as the president from last year because they didn't have his after this year yet.
I make a motion to approve the proclamation for Constitution Week.
Support.
Motion by Renee, support by Carrie. Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the leaf pile, we discussed this before and it's something that I don't, I don't want to leave forever because slowly it is going to become less and less rooms or getting those bins out, it'd be kind of nice to just get it done this year. Now, the numbers, you know, originally I tried to negotiate so that I ended up with a smaller number and it ended up a decently large number, you know, over, over five thousand dollars. There's basically two different ways to treat it, one is how, how Actra said we should treat it, which is take out a certain amount every year and I think that's reasonable, but it's built up to, to such a large degree, it'd be nice to take out all of the compost that's in here, in there and move the leaf pile back, because we're one large project that would be a decent amount of space and then maybe in the future, every year, maybe every other year, take out a few thousand dollars worth of leaves and actually get rid of them as well.
Ever given fall, it's gonna be refilled again real soon.
It is, very convenient for people to go down there and dump their, their leaves and grass for free, it's a good service by the township, I know it's supported by a decent number of people that use it, of course, you know, but it is something that we can't let grow and we had, even last year, Timmy complained about picking up the bins but not having that...
Oh, please, don't wait, number one.
They take a lot of time.
I make a motion to approve up the six thousand dollars from managing the leaf pile at the transportation authorized supervisor execute this.
Support.
Motion by Carrie, support by Nola. Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we're onto our discussion items, the first one being food sovereignty and, you know, obviously something that I think is important, I've written out it and I included a lot of information about various state constitutional amendments that are being done, that have been done recently in Tennessee and Maine, protecting local food rights. Obviously a big thing that has occurred over, over quite a long time in zoning, you know, I mean, really over the last, over the last century, this has worked out, you know, in this fashion. And so, and I brought up before quite a while, you know, early on, the idea of a township built with rights. The issue with that is, is like cities and villages have more of a foundation for home rule than townships, especially general law townships, but I still think it would be worthy of pursuing in the general code of ordinances, in ordinance specifically on the right to food or food sovereignty with, you know, there's multiple different types of examples in, in the reference packet and then, and then later enhancing that, but I'm hoping that over the next few months, we could probably have the discussion and pass something like that. That's, that's my idea, I wanted to see where other people were on it. All right, we'll go on to ARPA funds slash dog park because I got a quote on Duff Field and, you know, like I included in here, so Duff Field is a lease from the gun club. Now, that lease is out through twenty sixty-one. On that land, I updated them through emailing God's response, but they didn't tell me exactly there were gonna be more discussion on whether they're, you know, pro for it or they're against it or if they're indifferent to it. I think as far as I, I could tell on the lease agreement, we would have to write to do adaptations to the extent of law as long as it's some sort of public benefit to that part, but that is definitely something to, to consider. And in this, I am at the advance out there and talk to them and you can do different levels of fencing, honestly, if you have residential fencing, you have commercial fencing, with something like this, however you use, you don't wanna get away from commercial fencing because it'd be, he said you'd end up with a bunch of fencing pretty quickly. This is an economical quote and so, for instance, the bottom would not include a bar, it would include a wire that still braces it up and offers support, but it's cheaper. This would be the galvanized instead of the, the black plastic coating, it would be the four foot through the middle instead of the six foot. So on each choice that there is the economical version, that's the one we went with. The fencing came to ten thousand dollars, just a little over ten thousand dollars. And that is, it's a decent sized field, of course. If we split the field and then split it again, so we have a large dog area and a small dog area with double gates for entrances and exits and the ability to get equipment in for a large gate, that other half, because you're taking away an area that some people do play in, have to play baseball, obviously, which is a little different, but nevertheless, a kids' area, could be turned into a little playground section, you know, wouldn't necessarily have to, but it looks like out at Catawba with what we approved there, we're gonna come in at about half budget. Remembering that ARPA funds, I, I put in twenty grand and I think we're gonna get out of even, even with a couple thousand dollars in sand and everything, I think we're gonna come out of it at about ten thousand dollars. We're still waiting to see, we have two pieces of equipment put together out back and they seem pretty nice. The large piece out at Catawba, we haven't gotten yet, but this company seems like it makes some pretty decent stuff at, at good prices and so we could do something like that at Duff as well. I also heard that there has been some discussion of someone doing a private dog park. I do not know the details on that. That is, you know, I mentioned in the meetings before that I thought something in that direction would be good, so I don't know how, how those initiatives are progressing, but, you know, would, would be curious to, to see that pursuit as well. Because if we do, so if we do ten thousand dollars in fencing, if we want water there, that's another probably ten thousand dollars, you know...
Which could benefit both the dog park as well as any children did...
Correct, you'd wanna probably put a water fund at that point to run it and then probably ten thousand dollars in, in the playground stuff itself and maybe some more, because if we're gonna add some benches and some of those little adds, add-ons, maybe a little bit more, so somewhere between probably thirty, forty thousand dollars.
We're gonna need a dog waste station, at least one, if not...
Right, you need it, at least.
There's another thing for Catawba, because it is so out the way, I was thinking, how come we don't have a sign telling people that it's there?
Getting to it is so bad. How many people is this gonna benefit? This thirty, forty thousand dollars?
The dog park?
Yeah, if they use it, we drive all the way to Ferrisburg to use one.
I said, yeah, that's you, but I'm talking about the community themselves.
Well, no, that's not...
We don't know how many people are gonna use it. It's also putting a park there as well, making it be used as well, not just a dog park.
Right.
How about their baseball field is right at the corner of Duff like twenty...
That's exactly what we're talking about.
You would love...
You already got the fence there.
That's what we're talking about.
Right, if you add an additional ten thousand dollars of fencing, that's what we're...
Look, you already, why would you have to put extra fences on that?
You have to separate like a large dog, small dog area, you really do.
Maybe you oughta do a survey as to how many people really would use it.
Do a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, just that survey? That'd make our...
Well, it'd be different, I mean, it'd be a few thousand dollars.
Because it would be something, we all...
But, yeah, I mean, if I...
You have Facebook, they do everything else on Facebook.
Yeah, I mean, you can do that, you have such a limited response, such a narrow aspect of the township that it's, they're still, well, I've written about, I mean, they're very bad feedback mechanisms in government and so actually getting what the, what the public opinion is, is, well, usually, it's something to say when it is, they're selling something.
I just think thirty, forty thousand dollars could be better spent in a dog park.
Yeah, and, I mean, the position I'm in is, you know, the parks are in rough shape, the building's in rough shape, there's various responsibilities that the townships are taking on.
Which we are taking on.
Correct, correct. We have that gap in the, in the bike trail like we just, you know, we just passed and hopefully the municipality do as well. And so there are these responsibilities that already exist and it's still, in my opinion, to, to focus on those rather than handling things. But obviously, you know, other people think differently, of course, so, but that's why I have here...
We support those awful things too, it's not like we're, it's this or not, you know?
Correct, correct.
But I think it's all give and take and...
It is a trade-off.
And there's a lot of people that we have talked to in the last six years we've lived here that would be the dog park. So just because we walk, doesn't mean that it's not important.
I mean, we just wrote a letter tonight about Michelle Mixon. There have been other people that have approached us, that's why we've talked about it, is because we have approached, this isn't just...
In this community?
Yes, ma'am. Michelle Mixon, we just wrote a letter earlier tonight, she's one of them.
At least five different people. And when we go out to dog parks, we'll take our dogs there and we clean up after our dogs, just for public record, but when we go out there, there's two entrances, so we let our dogs run out there. The problem is, is that we can do that, but there's not the socialization. One of the reasons why we wanna have a dog park is so that people in the community can come together with their dogs, because it's not just about our dogs running, we can take them somewhere else to let them run, it's the socialization and not having to drive all the way to Heritage Park or all the way to Fremont or all the way to Ferrisburg, there's nothing in this area and there's some people even from...
Do you walk your dog?
I have hip problems, if you wanna get personal, no. We have two dogs, we have a dog run, they can come and go, but it's not just about the, obviously, we're here for we the people and we don't just represent ourselves, we have many people that we have talked to about this, which is why we keep them back to us.
Hey, I'll do my...
We support, we support the fact that we're in a real place, we love the dog park, not all these different things, that it's supposed to be money that's supposed to be meant for the community, not just, you know, not just this and that. We're, we're very excited to support all those things, but we're also very excited about the fact that there's a possibility of a dog park and fixing up Catawba, which most people don't want to exist.
Speak up, don't let me be out here by myself.
Possibly go sign out, more people would know it's there and use it. If it's not there, we can't use it.
Excuse me, this dog park is, where is it located at?
We don't have...
I mean, where is it proposed? Where is proposed?
We've had two quotes drawn up, so one was at Geico Field, that was the last quote that we had drawn up on Tyler, and then this one is on Duff, where Blue Lake Road crosses Duff Road, there's a baseball field there, that's where this quote is at.
No.
And I would like to hit on broadband, and obviously we heard Morgan earlier about the program that they're doing. Now, I have pushed on the internet companies decently hard since I've been here and I contacted fifteen companies to try to see if anyone would like to expand on the one that I had multiple conversations with and assumed the rest was US mission broadband, but eventually they, they dropped out as well. And at that time, part of that discussion was we could maybe fill in a gap, the ARPA funds came down first really restricted and it was expand water, expand sewer, expand broadband or give employees bonuses. And so broadband is what I was pursuing. And no one would do it, no one, no one's particularly interested in it. Comcast wasn't really interested in it for the amount that we had, they figured, because some of these areas, they don't, it doesn't financially pay off at this time because they're not dense enough, unless they would expand to cover this gap. But when I talked to the regional manager, I'd even reached out to the commission at the state level that oversees it, you know, they figured if we had like a few million dollars to, to contribute, they might be interested. And so I haven't made any progress. I mean, a decent amount of effort, I, I've made almost zero progress on broadband expansion. I've had some conversations that seem more positive, but no actual movement. And so it's, it's debatable, these types of programs overall, I disagree with them philosophically. I, I think going to a grant based from the top society like this, it's a very negative move. The United States has obviously moved in this direction very strongly, for instance, all the bailout tech, I don't know if you know what I'm saying, that type of thing. And so it's, you know, it's a decision. Do we want to contribute for something like that, a survey, or do we do not? Well, in the survey, so basically, they can't apply for the grants that, to do the expansions that might actually go through, apparently if someone else talks to them instead of me and, but they would need this as a step. Now, what happens a lot of times in these types of things is the government does a study and that study leads to a study, that study leads to a study.
Why is there money away, hoping that...
As far as I can tell, we're probably to the end of that portion because I believe they did a study that resulted in that they should do this study. And this study is very extensive in that it would be partial by partial and so from this point, they would use this data to apply for those grants drafted. So I don't think this study would result in another study. I think this would lead to the application of grants, which GMed does well with organizing those types of things, Morgan does very well with organizing those types of things.
I guess I'm confused...
Depends if we wanna contribute five grand.
At how they, like Comcast has their area, Charter has their area, so can't they find out what those areas are and determine if you have availability or not? I mean, I know...
There are immensely difficult companies to work with. The, the maps are so proprietary that if I can't copy one, the truth is, you know, there's disclaimers on it that I can't copy it, not supposed to show it to you. And so I had to compare like Charter and Comcast to draw where our own gaps are, but there, I mean, the maps they give you are sketchy, I had to go to the utilities commission at the state level after a year of trying to get the map from Comcast. It's not easy. And then like she was saying, so for an area, if there's an area that someone has service in it, they mark off the area and ask if it's serviced, even if there are other people that don't have service in the area. That's why this study would be partial by partial. So that's very specific.
When you say partial by partial, that means door to door? They're, what are they gonna...
They're gonna drive and look at where lines are.
Where they get the signals?
Just look at the poles.
Correct.
Well, that's, that's what they're gonna do, but...
They're gonna ask them dollars to look at poles.
It's, you know, they're, they're trying to...
I got satellites, they're getting them from my...
There could be broadband in the area, but that area can't afford the cost of the broadband, so that's a, that's a different study, I guess. broadband. So that's a, that's a different study, I guess. Because they're trying to bring broadband, but if, you know, if areas have it here and they can't afford it.
There's not enough customers. Now, you're one guy.
Yeah, you're still not going to.
Let's do a study to make sure.
Fifty bucks a month or a hundred bucks a month.
Well, right. That's where the, the grants fill the gaps. Now, what we'll have, we're scheduled for a little bit of internet expansion. It'll be af- after I'm gone, probably 2025 at the soonest. But there will be a couple of little areas that, that expand. What?
A few years, one month.
But, yeah, it'll be, you know, they're not, I mean, they're not short-term things. So, and I think it's important to think long-term. But it's odd. And because it's county-wide, here's the, here's the other thing that we could hit, right? If we contribute the five thousand dollars, they do it throughout the county. They decide, all right, we're gonna expand service in the city.
We just threw five thousand dollars out the door when we could have spent it on something that our community could have benefited from.
Right. That, that's a possibility.
A possibility.
It's a possibility that we, we don't have any control. Yeah, this is casual. So I want to see where people are at.
No.
Is there a real guarantee now?
I'm not sure if we'll get five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's hard. It's.
It's silly. It might happen.
Right. It may. Right. Maybe useful.
We don't need to expect a lot of it.
It would be a lot. Certainly not with, not with our, I think that's one of the things specifically.
Oh.
Next, we have assessing. Mr. McCabe isn't here. And I sent him this packet directly to let him know that I've included him in the schedule. But he's, you know, I think we're all a little confused on exactly what his criticisms were. And I think there's really two criticisms of substance. One is public access to assessing records, and the second is physically inspecting enough properties per year. So two cover one. I was, when I wrote this on Wednesday and put it out, I was relatively confident that we'd be able to make a public access terminal. But that confidence has gone down every day since. So because we're, we're caught between two places, our internet, our services run through Central Dispatch at the county, which also includes services for fire and police. So they need to be secure systems. They, so our BSNA program that we run internally, we can set that program up so it's view-only, so you can't go in and we'd have someone from the public editing someone's assessing records, right? We can set it up so it's view-only. So I thought we'd be good there. But if we have a computer that's logged in like that, like other computers we have here, if someone brought in USB and they plugged it in, they could technically send something into Central Dispatch, which Bill had a IT in his ass, very nervous about. Now, we have to legally have public access for these records. Updating them physically in the files is not going to work for, for a number of reasons. Just logistically, it wouldn't work. We need more people. We need more space. And so those are historical records. You can go onto the BSNA website and access it online, and your own property is free, but if someone else is assessing, if you want to compare the houses or something like that around you, it's three dollars per. And so I looked into what would we have to pay BSNA to make that a free service? And if it was a few hundred dollars, I wouldn't have brought it to you. I would have approved it, and we'd be there. That's four thousand two hundred dollars a year, which is a bit high for my taste, for what that is. And so that's not a great option. I talked to BSNA about having something through the internet because we can still have a public kiosk here that's secure as long as things are just running through the internet and not the ISQL servers in Meskeen. And they don't have another type of service that would work for that, that would be available, other than the forty-two hundred dollar a year service. And so making things more available is, is difficult on, on this one in particular. Now, the county has a kiosk like I would like to set up, and I think they have a little bit of a security risk themselves there. I went and made sure that it, that it actually exists and it actually works. So that is available. And the online BSNA service alone means that we're legal, even though you have to pay three dollars for all of these things. I don't have another good solution for us. I don't have an idea for it. So that's where that is. If anyone has a great idea, let me know. The other thing is assessing hitting twenty percent of properties each year, so they have a five-year rotation on physically visiting each property. Now, they have, because we contract through the county for assessing, assessing is an odd, it's its own odd little industry. And the audit covered years ago was fine. The audit, they're, they're going through an audit that I think will come out again next year, so we'll see how that is. Because when properties are sold and that type of thing, they do an assessment at that time. I believe they're hitting their twenty percent there, but that doesn't mean they're necessarily doing it in such an orderly fashion that you're actually hitting every property on a five-year rotation. Not sure, even the cave isn't sure of anyone that actually hits these types of numbers. It's very difficult. So the recommendations from the state, but we're on some sort of longer rotation. I don't know if it's, you know, seven to ten years, somewhere in there. To do more, it would of course be, be adding people to try to keep up with that pace, which we're already paying ninety-four thousand dollars a year for assessing services. So it's, it's quite a lot. So I also don't have a good solution for that.
I think the other thing that Mr. McCabe is also trying to get us to see is that we drive, we are ultimately responsible. We drive the assessing and, and not to sit back and let the county do whatever and tell us. You know, he's, I think, more trying to get us to set the standards and push it to the county. So that was another thing.
Sure.
You know, it's, they're, they're going to do what they do, but if we push them to say, okay, we want all of these done, you know, I guess, set the standard and let them fail versus just them pushing the lower standard.
Hmm. Sure.
That's the other thing he's, he's.
Right. You're right. That's assessing. Next, we have water policy. And obviously, we've, we've seen this before. This has the section added about the continued use of wells after connection, if they're not contaminated. And then there was a one other thing that came up at this last meeting, which is when do you charge the fee? And the board overall, our policy board, was leaning the direction of charging the fee when the pipe is laid past a certain property.
They're just gonna force their will on the people.
Mm-hmm. No.
Please, so that goes against.
So they're, they're getting around the mandatory connection by getting the payment up front.
Yep. By saying that if we're, if we're laying a pipe down your road, your house is within two hundred feet of that pipe, you're paying, whether you're hooked up to it or not.
Right.
That's right. That's what that section would be. Right. Well, the mandatory connection policy currently exists, but it doesn't currently exist written like this, right? So it's, it's being, being reviewed.
Why are they discussing it? It's already law. Why is it not in discussion?
Every ordinance we discuss has some sort of law.
What we do is free wording in a way that is more eligible later on in the future. That's all we're doing.
More eligible?
Yeah. I mean, there's no ordinance that we'll discuss that there's no laws on, unless we're extremely creative. But even food sovereignty, I mean, food has tons of laws around it, you know, even if we start treading new ground.
It's all because of the, that may have to stop east side. What areas, what they will put the city bar. That's the reason why we're.
So the reason we're looking at this right now is from the other municipalities that are connecting the system as well. Yeah. And so, and I queried about that, you know, because I have that one whole drawer of lawsuits, you know, when I was at the meeting and brought that up. They were like, you only have one drawer of lawsuits about this word? And so this, you know, it's not, not an ethical word. And they're looking at rewriting the contract. I'm not on that, on that subcommittee, to help ease some of these things. And I, you know, I pushed quite hard, especially with the past lawyer, who switched out lawyers on some sort of concept resolution between municipalities. But I did inquire with the current order that we have, like what happens if we do the same thing, to what extent, right? Like, we could change mandatory connection to required connection. I don't think anyone's gonna take it to court. But if you're changing something of substance, maybe someone takes it to court. So they could take us to court. They could get a court order saying basically we have to pass it because of the contract that the county, that the township is in. There could be financial penalties from their side if they're having damages. There could be, for instance, on the connection fee going past, there could be a resident that says that they're being charged an unfairly high amount. So they could bring a court action potentially. Technically, the township could be moved out of that association, the water policy board, which means that when our water connects to another municipality, each of those municipalities will charge us individually, which would be significantly more money. And so not a great option insofar as all that kind of stuff. But I will bring up the concern about the connection fee being charged and, you know, as the pipe is being laid in. So, all right, good. We are on to our second public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please come with a lecture or anything.
My name is Mr. 2747. When you were talking about citizens finding assessments on neighboring properties, is that what you wanted to know? How they can do that?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Everybody can log into Meskeen County GIS. You pick a parcel, scroll down, and it'll show you the assessment currently on the property without a fee.
The GIS is pretty useful.
Without a fee.
Yeah, it's probably available.
Yes. So maybe you don't.
Yeah. McCabe has various concerns with that as well. The township property are the only ones, well, government properties are the only ones that I hear about. But it doesn't show all of the information, but in, in a general sense, it's very useful if anyone's actually looking for that information. If you search Meskeen County GIS or Meskeen County Property Viewer, it'll come right up.
I think some of the homeowner names are not, I don't know how often that stuff gets updated.
May not be updated, but the parcel and the, and the information about the current assessment.
Right.
Right. Al?
One additional comment, because you were discussing ARPA quite a bit tonight.
Correct.
And you expressed your whole legitimate concerns about future accountability. That's a, that's a good concern of yours. You know, we, we discussed this last time last year, whether or not ARPA is really associated with COVID relief, you know? And of course, we all assume that it is. I mean, it didn't come along until COVID, and they told us it's relief from COVID. So if you're taking money for relief, you've had to have suffered some kind of damage, right? Or you've had to have an expenditure like masks and sanitary items and so forth. So to really consider a lot of what this money is being spent on and spent for is pretty suspect from my point of view.
Yeah, I can tell you that, so the theory that the government's going by, right? So they have the shutdowns and lockdowns, which obviously were a huge drag on the economy, right? And so the.
People love this.
Yes, tons, right? You squeeze out the small players and the large players grow, as the game we just went through over the last couple of years. And so they are saying that there was so much economic damage from the shutdowns and the lockdowns, that that economic damage is being replaced by these ARPA. Originally, it was coming down, because they passed it basically without things being placed at the federal level to say they were giving out money, right? It's more of a political move. And then they were still making up the rules. And at first, they came out with very strict rules. You could expand water. You could expand sewer. You could expand broadband, or you could give employees bonuses. And then that wasn't extremely popular, and none of them would apply to us very well.
It's on the lid?
Right. And so they debated that for a while. In their final ruling a few months later, which is for a page document, if you are less than ten million dollars, they left it pretty wide open. Now, in the resolutions, it bans a few things. And I, I include those things listed in there. But other than that, it can be used for government services.
Right. But that's, in my mind, still, that's very suspect. How's that related to COVID? How is that related to the illness?
It's more related to government lockdowns.
Yes. Well, and, yeah, it's a big payoff, is what it is, in my, my opinion. Now, I forwarded all the information from Meskeen Public Schools in regards to their expenditures. They had just, from the asset funding, that they had just solved four million dollars for windows, doors, HVAC systems, and security cams. And I was like, and they got thirty-six million total. And I was like, I had a long conversation with the superintendent. I said, you know, how do you justify this? Well, it's pretty available to us. I said, yeah, but, you know, you and I have a different world point of view. I said, if you take money, establish earmark for something else and use it for this, that's not legitimate. That's not honorable. That's not the right thing to do. Well, and from his point of view is, well, I'll use whatever money I can get to help the people of my district in any way that I can. And that, that would include then drug sales, drug money revenue. You got the sheriff and the prosecutor right now, everybody know drug laws. Yeah. And so that's not gonna bring, I'll just suggest to you that if you do these things, it's not gonna prosper this community. You may think it will, but in God's economy, you're gonna bring a curse. You're not gonna bring prosperity. Well, that, if me as a man of God, that's my moral people, okay?
Yeah. Appreciate it. Well, and we debated that, you know, because philosophically, I, I disagree with it from the higher level. And, but if you don't use the money for various government services, repairing buildings, these, these types of things, then you're disproportionately penalizing the citizens of the local community in comparison to everywhere else. So, I mean, it's, it's a good debate.
And then when more comes around, you know, oh, you guys didn't need the first round, so you're not gonna get the next round.
Well, hopefully more doesn't come around.
Well, that's sort of how it works. There was the transportation money they talked about for a while, and infrastructure that they're doing differently. But for a while, that was gonna come through the local municipalities too, so.
Right.
My name is Kerry Coleman. I live in Wyoming, Michigan. Comments? I have a question. I think the supervisor does a good job.
Thank you.
Well-informed, knowledgeable. That's pretty awesome. The bidding process. The question is, the bidding, the bidding process. Now, I put it in for that little parcel on Putnam Road and.
And between Putnam and Catalpa?
Dressel and Putnam.
Yep.
You gonna use the. Realtor.
Comparables.
Comparable to know where you set the bid at? Is, is that a Realtor comparable? Is that more than one Realtor? Or, you know, is it average?
We'll see. We'll see who will do it. And so, I mean, the last one that we had, like that we had two Realtors put in comparables for free, you know, before that, we'd been paying a small fee. So it has changed. And then those are for the township board because the decision is wholly within the power of the board. Those are essentially guiding.
Okay. So the second one is, I noticed that you're putting a little park on Goose Lake.
Catalpa. A park is already there. We're making some improvements.
The park has been there for years and years and years.
We're just approving it.
But, and I, I commend you, I commend you for putting a, a park up there. We've been waiting for one. Those metal ones was, it was talented metal ones to go.
Yeah. And that was hard metal too. When we were cutting that out, that was American Steel. The guy I was cutting it with, he said, this is before they started making steel in China.
Yeah.
It was before I was born, so it was.
But, but I would like to, so if someone will contact me, because I'll put the application in for the property, if someone's gonna contact me for what the starting bid would be, or that would be after the.
So the, it'll be, the, the minimum bid will be set by the board in the meeting itself, you know? And it probably, it probably doesn't make sense to, to, for me to give you a number before that, because, you know, I might have differing opinions on the board. And so it'll be set by vote specifically then. But we will reach out to you. So we recently switched over to the three-meeting process, and so we didn't charge you fees upfront this.
Right, right, right.
And because we didn't know exactly how it'd play out, like if we were hired an appraiser for, you know, a decent amount of money, then your fee would end up being larger at the beginning, but because we're not, it'll still stay smaller. at the beginning, but because we're not, it still stays smaller, so we will reach out to you about following up on that.
Thanks for looking out. Yes, but anyway, that, that's all, and I appreciate, uh, this experience, uh, being in Meskeen. So, I'm sorry.
Here every month.
Follow up on this question. My name is Kerry Brown. I live in North York, Chores. Um, the three-meeting process, so, um, you're gonna, the bid's gonna be set during the second meeting.
Correct.
And then the, what's with the third?
The third one, we actually opened the bid, so.
So it's gonna be opened up on the third?
Yep, on the third meeting. Now, we have sealed that, let's say, open up.
I'll be here in a second, so we can hear the minimum bid.
Okay.
Well, actually, well, we set the minimum, and then the third meeting, we, we look at all the, all the bids that come in, we open them all up, and then.
Okay, now, um, the, you have meetings every month, or is it?
Correct.
Are we around the same time?
Second Monday, six P M.
Also a website, too, and you can go back and watch all of our videos, too, if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, this is pretty interesting. It's my first time actually sitting in one, hearing the different, um, the discussions you guys have with the county from the public. It's all about community, so I'll go right there. It's a good meeting. It's a pretty cool experience. Thank you for this, it's good seeing you.
Yeah, good seeing you, too. Took me a minute to recognize you.
Yeah, you didn't have all that before.
Any other board comment? On anything? Any board comment? Oh, that is, that is correct, yeah, so we're doing another joint session, where the Board of Trustees, the Planning Commission, the Zone Board of Appeals will be in the same, um, meeting. We had one last year, we'll record it again in case anyone wants to follow up with it. If, that basic idea is trying to get people on the same page of problems that we're seeing, concerns that we're seeing, the direction that we're heading, the good things that we're seeing, uh, and work some of those out directly. I mean, it's nice for people to be able to talk to each other. Um, so we set up the room a little different, or at least we did last year, we just put tables, uh, in a square here because it's quite a few board members, um, to sit in the same meeting. It's discussions, uh, so we're not voting on anything at that time, um, but it's open discussion, so anyone's welcome to come. Uh, the seating will be a bit different.
I would be there.
All right.
Is that seven?
No.
No, it's not seven.
Sixteen? Oh, good, then.
Yeah, I figure most people, you know, are trying, and make the meetings, are trying to do somewhere around there. It's worth asking, but yeah. It's worth asking, but yeah.
I wanted to mention to the board that we're closing on the Duff House on Wednesday, so that will be out of our hands.
Out of time.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
For any other favor, say aye. You mean adjourned?